Ready to roll. All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We're going to reconvene now in open session of the Amory Board of Education here in Amory. And the first thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda items.
I looked over everything and found nothing of questions, so I'd like to make a motion to accept them. The accept the checks as provided.
Consent.
Consent agenda items, yeah.
And a second.
Second.
Joe? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Now, we'll go to our administrative reports.
Okay. Winter sports are well underway at Amory High School as at the middle school as well. We had National Honor Society induction ceremony weeks ago. And we hosted our first powerlifting competition a few weeks back. We had our JV kids and a huge shout out to Trace Cipioski, our powerlifting coach, and then Davah Manning and Cora Beebo help them out. And then we had a bunch of other volunteers. Powerlifting program just continues to grow, so we're really excited about that. It gives a lot of kids a new opportunity at AHS. I do not show them how to do it, no. No. Honors Choir participated at Osceola two weeks ago. We had our year group, yearbook group photo day. We had winter jazz band and choir concerts last week, saw a number of you in attendance at that. And we just began the demo phase of the English Foreign Language Wing in the far northwest corner, made our next transition phase, and everybody's at their temporary homes. We've got high school honors band coming up on January 8 when we come back from the break, and we've got end of semester one on January 12.
All right. At the middle school, first off, I didn't put it on there, but we have a big band and choir concert tomorrow night, and we're excited to hear all the Christmas songs and all the songs that the kids have been working on. It should be great. We are kicking off our project-based learning right after we're back from break, and we'll be preparing again with some Genius Hour programming with our students. Also, when we're back from break, we'll be starting our student goal setting, and it's our mid-year check-in to remind the kids about their own personal goals, and we'll have them review some objectives and things that they can do for continuous improvement. Storybook Theater will be kicking off, I think it's the week after, the second week of January. And Storybook Theater is new to us, but it's the same thing as Prairie Fire Theater. I don't know if Tracy's here, but it's the same organization. They went through some changes, and some of the people that were doing Prairie Fire Theater took over and became Storybook Theater, and they're going to be doing Rapunzel. But the way it works is the same, where the kids have one week to prepare, and I'm always quite amazed at the great show that they put on on that Friday and Saturday night after just one week of practice. Middle school wrestling and girls' basketball will have their first competitions when we're back in January as well. We have our Warrior Way celebration on this Friday, so we're excited for that check-in with our kids and to celebrate all the great things they're doing. We'll be doing fast bridge reading and math testing, our mid-year benchmarking to look at our students' mid-year performance in math and reading. It helps us do some goal-setting for kids. And then, the end of the semester, as Josh said, is the 12th, and we have staff in service on the 15th, and we're excited to be working with our groups and PLC groups. Any questions for me?
All right. Good evening. The intermediate school recently had a food tribe, which we collected 885 items, which was 30 more than last year. We made it competitive this year, so the grade level that donated the most items had a pop and popcorn party, so our third grade actually won that, and they celebrated that today. They were very excited about that. The intermediate school also sponsored a family, so we had a giving tree, and that is through the Amory Secret Santa Program. So I want to thank our intermediate school staff for sponsoring the family, but above all, I really want to thank the Amory Secret Santa Program. It is a program that is run solely by volunteers. I'm a part of that committee, as is Mr. Benson and Lisa, and a lot of work and time goes into that, and I can tell you, it directly impacts our students to make sure that they receive gifts underneath the Christmas tree. So it's a wonderful program, and our community greatly supports it. I can't thank them enough for supporting our kids. Report cards went home last Thursday. And finally, we had our third grade concert last Thursday as well, and the theme was gnomes, and it also centered around Christmas. It was very well-attended, so I want to thank Mrs. Henningsgard and Mrs. Belial, who was her student teacher, for making that be successful. It was very, very cute. Kids had a great time. Couple upcoming things we have in addition to what these other two have already shared is we have Dinner and a Movie, which is a Warrior celebration that we have here on Thursday. We have our sing-along, which happens Friday at the end of the day, and then we also will run our benchmark screening January 8 through 12.
Because, you know, I don't have a voice. Just want to say we have fantastic things going on at Glean. We have amazing staff there doing amazing things. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
Well, Paula, yeah. Just a couple things. Student services, people services world here, just always working, I think, is, I just want to recognize that, you know, in our administrative teams, we always have these ideas and brainstorm ways in which we can continue to recruit and retain our educators and really high needs in the area of special education, and that's not just the state, that's nationally. And so DPI has released a document that has some different strategies and suggestions using flow-through funds and other funds available to really just acknowledge teachers, to do what we can to retain them. That might be workload considerations. It could be incentivizing professional development or their own licensure, maintaining that licensure, having ways in which that our special ed staff, particularly in this school district of Amory, really acknowledge and feel supportive of them, not just through salary increases, but through really detailed ways in which we're giving them unique opportunities to be here. So just always have our eyes on that, and this is just another resource to help us to that end. So, next up, collaboration. We do occasionally some things with the Amory Public Library, and as they're in their new location, we felt it would be good to reach out and put together a memorandum of understanding in place. That's not something that we necessarily need to collaborate with everyone, but it's good practice, especially for working with two government agencies that kind of spell out what our expectations are for communication around students using the library in the course of school, staff members using meeting rooms, those sorts of things. So I worked directly with Heather Liarda and just really thanks, thanking her for being their liaison through the board. So they'll review that, and so that'll be just kind of a good organizational thing to put in place for communication. Finally, we've got an EMLSS training, Equitable Multi-Level Systems of Support. I reported a couple months ago the great work we're doing in terms of counseling and providing some outside agencies counseling to support our students. That idea came out of an earlier conversation, which we really looked at all our behavioral and academic supports. And that was a few years ago. So this initiative and this training is really resetting. We're going to take a look again at our behavior and our academic interventions that we have for kids, look to see where any gaps are, and perhaps, you know, a new intervention or a way to service kids is going to come out of this conversation. So we'll have representatives from every level of the district, each of the four buildings here, and just excited about, you know, the ideas that come out of these conversations and the professional development that CISA does to help us kind of guide those conversations. When you're, when you're kind of in your own district, sometimes it's hard to see where your own gaps are because you're just kind of in your own wheelhouse all the time. So these are good conversations to have as a team.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. And now we'll go to our People Non-Discrimination Educational Equity Report. Brad?
Thank you. Yes, this is an annual report where we're tasked with officially reporting any alleged complaint data on the various types of disabilities and class of disabilities, gender, creed, religion, any of those sorts of, really any of these complaints. Certainly, a lot of things are resolved at the building level, and this no way reflects that, you know, we don't have these conversations and there's nothing occurring at any of these buildings. However, the formal complaint data are ones in which, you know, the email's coming to me, it's written, it's kind of going above and beyond. So informal, in this case, and there's one that is in the area of disability. An informal resolution simply means that it's resolved at the building level, that there's a conversation between student services director, a principal, potentially a family or students that might be involved, and, you know, it's resolved there at that level. The other category there of which we have none are those formal resolutions, and if we had any of those, those would be ones in which the board would take some sort of action with respect to that complaint. So we don't have any of those, so pretty short report. We've just got one to report on to the class of disability.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll go to our informational items, and we'll go to our district and school report cards.
Okay. Well, I'll lead off on this, and then I'll pass things over to Josh, and then we'll go right down the way. There isn't anything for Paula to say because there isn't a report card for the elementary, which is probably fortuitous in that she's lost her voice, so you don't have anything to say because there's nothing to say. So the first segment of information comes from the district perspective. First, the school and district school report cards. We're moving towards a dozen years of this reality as part of the landscape of public schools. The four big categories you see there involve student achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track and post-secondary readiness. So in formal fashion, on that next slide, you'll see our scorecard number. It's an arbitrary number without the title beneath it. The 72 exceeds expectations. There are five categories of ranking, but the next category up from that is significantly exceeds expectations. We, as a district, have never achieved that. We've been close a couple of times, but we are in the exceeds expectations, and every single year of the nine years that they've done the school report card, it's been 11 total, but two of those years there wasn't a district report card, didn't exist for anyone. We've exceeded expectations every single time. So in comparison to last year's number, we were off that by one. The previous year was 72.1. We're at 72 even, so we're in the same ballpark. Actually, three different years there weren't a report card. So a dozen total, nine years we've had state report cards. So if you move further along here, the areas of emphasis on the school report card are English Language Arts and Math. So you'll see a lot of comparisons between those two subject areas. There is a little bit of information here on Science and Social Studies, but mostly it's on English Language Arts and Math. Next month, you're going to see a presentation by the administrative team on standardized testing. What's the schedule for the spring? So this is sort of the precursor to that. What you see here is information that's gleaned from the results of the forward exam, the pre-ACT, and the ACT. That's where all these numbers come from. So, long story short, for the district, we have historically, including this last, most recent year, exceeded the state in ELA and also exceeded the state in math at the district level, which results in an exceeds expectations ranking. In the area of growth, growth means you're taking student A and moving them forward, literally each and every student in a target group moving forward. The target group is kids that need to grow, kids that are not doing as well as others. You'll see here in English Language Arts, we're ahead of the state average. In '22, '23, we were also ahead of the state average in '21, '22. And in math, we're ahead of the state average this last year, and then even with the state average the year before. Growth, again, is moving kids forward from the point they were at the beginning to the point they were at the end, simply. It's not quite that simple, but that's really what we're talking about. On-track to graduation is exactly what the title is saying. It's are they on track to graduate? You'll see some other information here that's not graduation, like at the far right, you'll see absenteeism. Well, absenteeism has a direct link to graduation. If you're not coming to school, you're likely not to make it to graduation. So you'll see here, the blue mark is our mark as a district, and in each of those markers, ahead in state math by a significant margin, almost 24 total points ahead. In the area of third grade ELA, ahead of that state average by 13. Graduation, we're doing better than the state by about 6%. And absenteeism, we're doing better than the state by about 10 percentage points. The way they quantify absenteeism, X absence is over X time, and that identifies kids that are in the at-risk category, meaning they may not make it to the finish line because they're not coming to school often enough, and that's the way that they define that. And please stop me if you have any questions, because there's a lot of information, I know.
For the absenteeism and then this on-track to graduation, what grades does this encompass?
The absenteeism, I think, is identified. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong time. I think it's just middle school, high school?
I would normally give it a 3 through.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The chronic absenteeism is any kid who misses more than 10% of the days.
From third grade through senior year.
Each year.
So there's two, there's two scores on attendance. One is just your basic attendance, what percentage of kids are there, and then chronic absenteeism, as he said, is a different number. We get scored on both of those.
And the scoring is like out of a, is it out of 100? Is that how I'm reading this? So?
It's percentage of how many kids out of 100 may, were gone those certain number of days. Yeah.
So when we're looking at like a 92.2, does that mean that 92.2% of our kids are here and not?
Yes, yes. Not the other way. The other way you would be in trouble.
I just wanted to make sure that that was being interpreted correctly, because that is kind of confusing if you look at it that way.
It is a little backwards in the way they've depicted, where we've depicted that, yes.
Do you get to categorize chronic absenteeism?
No. So they'll just go through, you know, in your, like, I think in my building, it was like 96% attended, and then our chronic was about 96% too. So basically, the reason they do that is if you, you know, you may have, school may have 95% of their kids are there, but the 5% that aren't are really, you know, really struggling. So they want to know how many also missed more than 10% of the days. And those are two real big indicators on school success.
Now, there is a little bit of a problem with the way that the state does this because you track your own attendance. And when you track your own attendance, there's obviously that factor there where you could certainly manipulate the data. We track attendance, and if they're not here, they're not here. I mean, there's the legendary story in the school district of Amory. Tom and I lived it. One of our neighbors tracked attendance on their own, and two years in a row, they had 100% attendance district-wide, which means to me, every kid, every day, all year long. And that's just not realistic. So we made that inquiry, and our neighbor said to us, well, we knew where they were. Well, that doesn't mean they were here. So there's a little bit of issue with the attendance factor. If you can move on to that next slide.
And that was grades 3 through 12, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for correcting me.
Oh, 3 through, okay, because on-track, gotcha.
So the target group outcomes, again, target group are the kids that are typically not performing as well. You're seeking to move those groups forward. So the target group outcomes, you'll see us at 93.8% graduation in the 2023, 2022, '23 school year, and then in the 21, '22 school year, you'll see it at 96.2. So those are our numbers to our numbers. Chronic absenteeism, you'll see our numbers to our numbers again. Growth score there, so you're seeking to move that towards 100%. You want kids that are in the at-risk category to get out of the at-risk category, which would be a growth score for on-track to graduation. And then lastly, achievement. Achievement for target group means those kids that are in the lowest-performing group, they are achieving proficiency marks at about a 25% clip. That's the area that you have to grow in order to do really well on the scorecard, and you'll see some examples of what that looks like when you do grow those kids here this evening. Test participation, this looks like attendance in some ways. You don't have to test all of your ACT kids. You don't have to test all of your forward exam kids for the scorecard. That is not a necessity. Now, it may seem strange to you. It's strange to me. You don't have to. Now, there's really only one place that you get dinged on that. There's a federal scorecard, where if you don't test above 95% of your kids, you'll start getting nasty grams from the federal government. Those aren't fun. This, though, you don't have to test all your kids. I'm proud to say we have tested all of our kids in almost every case. We're at 99%. We didn't test 10 of our kids out of the 1,400, and nearly every one of those kids was an opt-out from the family. We feel that every kid is worthy of being tested because every kid matters. You'll see some numbers that are not at 99%. You're getting into an apples-to-oranges comparison where your number's not up as high as ours is, because if you're at 93, 94, 95%, that means about 40, 50, 60 of your kids didn't take the test, and that's going to markedly change the results, depending on who those kids are. So, long story short, from a district standpoint, we tested everyone. I believe the next slide is the number of kids. Nope, I didn't do that one. We only missed, we didn't have 10 kids test, and the reason we didn't, again, because they opted out. So now you're going to see high school, middle school, intermediate school, and that'll get us to the end. So I'm going to turn over to Josh.
I'd like to give my time to Tom Benson tonight.
Nice try.
He's going to need it. All right, you can go to the next slide. Actually, go back one. So, go ahead and move forward. I'll explain as I go here.
Wait a minute, go back.
Nah, I don't want to take too much time here. You'll notice that our English and math scores are above the state average, above the state average. We had more growth in English Language Arts than we did in math. If you go to the next slide, priority area, on-track to graduation, you know, this is... I don't really have a whole lot to say about this. We're doing what we need to do here.
Kids are coming to school and they're graduating.
Yeah. Next, Becky. Target group is an area that we're really struggling with. This is our bottom 25%. They continue to be a challenge, and we continue to work with them when our at-risk programs and trying to motivate them. Big issue here with our target group kids is coming to school. And if nothing else, we get really good data from the state that lets us know that this is an area. We got them to school about 10 percentage points better last year, so that was a huge improvement. We've still got some work to do. Next slide, Becky. You'll see this is our English Language Arts performance over time. We made big-time efforts last year, and our bottom group was our focus. You'll notice that our blue group, the below-basic category, decreased by almost four and a half points, which was something we were, when we saw that, we thought, okay, hopefully that'll have a real positive impact on our scorecard, but it didn't. But we did make that number shrink. Next slide, same thing happened with math. We shrunk the below-basic category and moved those kids up 4.6% as well, which was a huge point of emphasis for us last year at the high school. Go ahead, Becky. Test participation, we did very good at the high school.
We had seven total.
Okay.
Didn't test.
Okay.
Yep, there it is.
Yeah. Go ahead, Becky. All right. So despite the fact that we're a two-star school, I need to point out that the ACT has multiple areas that they're testing on, not just the English and math, science, reading. We also have a social studies test that we take. Our 10th graders placed first place overall in the conference, number one. So that's our current 11th graders. Our 11th graders were fifth place. Our ninth graders were in fourth place. How that adds up to a two-star report card, you'll never be able to explain to me. Our overall achievement score was in the top 60% of the state. We are 15th out of 39 schools in the achievement score area. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. All right. So, of course, we're trying to identify target group students. We're trying to use this with data-driven evidence from high school and middle school data. We're always looking at the comparisons of data. We just got practice tests back from the fall that we already dove into. Target group with math students, one thing that we're looking at doing next year is, with the help of the eighth-grade math teachers, we're using forward test data and then all of their sixth-something, eighth-grade years, and we're implementing a screener test that we're going to kind of try to have benchmark standards. And our goal for next year, instead of doing a skinny pre-algebra all year long, which we're doing this year, next year, our goal is to do a pre-algebra class that runs in the fall, and then an algebra class that comes right off of it in the spring, so those kids will end up having 85 minutes, and it kind of catches them back up. The goal of the state is to get everybody through geometry in their sophomore year or as many as possible, and we think that this strategy by hand-scheduling them will help out, and hopefully, we can get as many as possible to that level. I think important things to bring up. The bottom three middle schools in the conference were the top three high schools and vice-versa. Again, you're going from the forward test every year that has specific standards. There's third-grade standards, fourth-grade standards, fifth grade. Eighth grade teaches to the eighth-grade standards because that's what their test is. The ninth-grade test that our kids take is the same exact test that our 10th graders take. It's almost like a junior preparation test, and so to continue to compare forward test scores to ACT scores is ludicrous, especially when you're doing as amazing as our middle school is. It's a, it's a tough, tough thing for us to do. It's next to impossible to expect our incoming ninth graders to be able to perform at a 10th or 11th grade level without having gone through the national standards, which is what the ACT takes. I would appreciate if the state of Wisconsin would come up with a ninth-grade forward test, a 10th-grade forward test, so we could, or stop doing the growth comparison from middle school to high school because it's not a fair comparison in my eyes. So, although our achievement score went up, it also counted 5% less this year because we had a higher free and reduced percentage, so they took the weight value of our achievement score and reduced it by 5%. So even though we did better, our scorecard went backwards because they thought they were doing us a favor by weighting the growth category more, which if, we didn't have Amory Middle School, that maybe would have been a good thing, but unfortunately, it wasn't. Did I summarize that accurately, Thomas? Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. You know, we've been doing this for a lot of years, and we've had a conversation before about how I feel about state report cards and testing and how it's just never a true reflection of what's going on in your own school and all of the things that's happening there. Comparing apples to oranges is never successful when you're looking at trying to figure out what's going on. So, all of that said, one thing that really stood out to me that you said was, we struggle to get kids here, and we know that that's an impact on their performance, their test-taking performance, their performance in school, and then their performance to get to graduation. So I know we've done a lot of things. We have so many programs that focus on a different realm than just sitting in a classroom and learning academics. I think we've really pushed the envelope in trying to get those things done. I think, you know, sitting here looking at this and thinking about this over time, that the way that you get kids here is for them to buy in, to feel a sense of belonging, to feel that they belong at the school, to have a place for them. I know that we have at-risk, you know, situation for some of those kids. We have the house building for some of our kids. It gives them a real purpose. Are there other ways, and I'm not expecting you to answer this tonight, but just something to think about going forward, but are there other ways that we can build a culture and a climate, especially in our high school, to get kids to buy in, to feel more accepted, to feel that they have a place? I just think that those are, I'm not going to ask you to outline those tonight. I just want to say that that's something to think of going forward, to give kids a sense of buy-in, a sense of belonging, that all kids matter and that they all need to be here.
We're always looking for those hooks for kids, always.
We've done a lot. It's been, it's been very diversified there to get kids into places that sometimes they don't feel that they can cut it or be there or belong into an academic situation, and we have a lot of different outlets for them, but I think we got to, we got some more work to do.
I really like that you're the nice and warm and fuzzy person, and then I was just thinking like the opposite at most, was like, how many times are you working with law enforcement to call them and say, hey, are you going to find this child? Or can you knock on this person's door in the morning and have them wake up and get to school? Many of the times, and I can tell you, this is, this is a parental issue of not having discipline enough to get the kids to school. And again, I mean, I've
I agree.
I've done all this, and so, again, I love the fact of creating the nice, warm environment. I hope we're driving around knocking on, knocking on doors when a kid should be in school, it's the law, right? And especially with that absenteeism, that chronic absenteeism. And especially with that absenteeism, that chronic absenteeism. If they're not at school, they're going to be in the criminal justice system later on in life.
And actually, I'm pretty happy with where our number is at compared to the rest of the state. But what we do notice is it is tied to our target group kids. So then you get dinged doubly, you know, because they're not doing well in the target group and it does hurt your overall attendance. But yeah, you know, a lot of tough phone calls and trying to get some of those kids that are struggling to come into school and trying to understand their circumstances and have a heart at the same time. And you've been there with those conversations as well.
And you know, we have, I think at the middle school, maybe three or four percent that are at that chronic absenteeism. That's typically higher at the high school levels than all the other buildings because our kids don't drive cars. And the other part, and majority of mine, a lot of them are kids that aren't even Amory students, but they're here at one of our treatment centers and things like that. And then we really struggle getting them at times. But yeah, we do quite a bit of work to make sure that we're servicing all those kids to make them here.
I think now would be a good time for a news flash update that I just shared with Josh and Tom late last week. I got a phone call from the Department of Public Instruction on Thursday. And the State Superintendent of Education, Jill Underly, is going to be visiting Amory High School in February to recognize our high school as an exemplary high school in the area of career and technical education. So it seems strange to me that the State Superintendent of Education's coming to recognize us for exemplary performance in our high school that meets few expectations. That seems like a disconnect to me.
I asked for five minutes with her that day.
Because I'm going to ask her that question if Josh doesn't beat me to it.
Oh, yeah.
Because that seems a little strange. Tom, you're up.
All right, so this is the middle school report card and we scored a rating of ninety-point-one, which significantly exceeds expectations. One thing just to mention, these scores, when you see a report card and you're talking about achievement and growth, they're over a three-year period. So you're talking the last three years. They're weighted a little bit more at the current year and a little less each year down. But it's really hard to move the... You know, Josh, I commend the stuff that they are working on. It's hard to move that needle, though, when it only counts for, you know, a third of it. So, I mean, it takes time. This is our forward exam scores. So we're around, you know, seventeen to sixteen percent above the state average in ELA and math this year. We're about twenty-one to eighteen percentage points above it in social studies and science. I just want to note that the social studies and science tests are normed at a totally different level than the ELA and math. So seventy-one to, or even a seventy-five percentage in one is about the same as a sixty to fifty-five to sixty in another. They're completely arbitrary, which makes it hard for people to completely understand. But it went through a state change and they made a... They called them NAEP standards. And so they moved the ELA and math and did not touch the social studies and science. And that confuses people.
But it's not on the state report card either.
Correct. The next is our priority area and achievement. So this is where our students fell. And these are not percentage points. These are not percentages. These are numbers. You get one-point-five points for every student that's advanced and one for proficient and half for a basic student. So it's kind of a slightly different system. But the top score obviously is a hundred. So again, we are, you know, close to twenty points above the state in ELA and math. When you get to growth score, this is where our school did really well, where we had ninety-four-point-five growth, a growth score of ninety-four-point-five and a growth score of a hundred in math. To give you an example of how that works is they look at each student and they say this is the expected growth that a student should get. So they know exactly the demographic makeup of that student, whether they're a male or female, if they were special ed or not, if they come from a free and reduced home or not. And they look at the score they had the year before and they say for that student, this is the growth that they should get based on statistical data. If your student improves more than that, then they call that value-added and your student had higher growth than they anticipated. And if they scored lower than that, then there's a negative growth score. So we're really pleased with our growth and I'll come back to that in a second. Again, this is our on-track to graduation. Where this year, we're at ninety-five-point-eight compared to this state at ninety-one. And our chronic absentee was ninety-five-point-six compared to the state at eighty-two. And then they use math for the on-track to graduation rating for middle schools. The reason they do that at eighth grade is they say that... And where at the, on the intermediate, it's reading. And they say that the biggest indicator to on-track to graduate is you need to be reading at grade level before you leave the elementary school. And they need you to be math at grade level before you enter the high school compared to the state score there. Again, then our priority area scores, we're at the ninety-four for attendance for the priority. Again, this is our target group kids. So I was really pleased that even if you're a bottom twenty-five percent student that's struggling, they're still coming to school pretty well. And achievement, you know, for those kids is always going to be something that we're going to work on. But then it does show an indicator of achievement over time. This is ELA. So you want higher gold is the advanced kids and then the gray is the proficient kids. You want to have your gold and your gray be high. So we're really pleased to see that those have improved over time. The twenty-two-one scores, those, we saw a dip in the last couple of years because of, you know, COVID loss and things. And we've really pleased to be back at above that now. And then the next one is math and that shows the same thing. So we're pleased with that. So, to put a little bit in that perspective, that score is significantly exceeding expectations. We've exceeded or significantly exceeded expectations every year that they've had a report card. That score of ours at the beginning at ninety-point-one was the ninth-highest middle school score in Wisconsin out of three-hundred-and-eighty-five middle schools. It put us at about the top two percent. That's the highest score in our CSO eleven, so of all the schools in our area. Just to put it in perspective, this is where achievement came. And the next chart shows, you want to be on the far right. The far right is a school with almost a perfect achievement. We weren't all the way over there, but we were on the positive side of that. And the higher the box, that means the more, with the number of schools that fell into that. And so we were really pleased with that. But the next one is the one I was the most pleased with. This is how far our kids grew. So that's taking in where were our kids the year before and how much did they grow? And so we were on the far right. And our growth score was the fifth-highest out of three-hundred-and-eighty-five schools. And our math growth was the highest middle school score in the state. So I want to commend all the different people working on that. That was a really strong score. To give you an example of how they do it, this next chart, if you were at expected growth, you're right in the middle where that line is at a three. So a three means, if you're a three at every single area, that means that those kids grew at the expected growth that the state said they should grow at. And anything to the far right of that is a growth that is higher than they expected you would be able to achieve. So I was really pleased to see that it doesn't matter in my building if you were a boy or a girl or you were a high achiever student or a low-achieving student, special ed student. Every single kid grew at an exceptionally high rate. And I want to just thank the staff that worked really hard, all the teachers, all the counselors, special ed staff, everyone there to do some really great things to get our kids there. And also want to commend all those teachers at the Intermediate Elementary because the students came to us with skills and we just continued to help with them. So that was real strong. I also want to just point out, as Josh had said, if a middle school has exceptionally high growth scores, it's really, it sets the high school back. And like, as he said, every middle school with exceptionally high growth scores had low high school scores and vice versa. So it's kind of a system that's setting him up and that's... And so this isn't going to help you next year either, just saying. We do have an action plan, though, as always. We'll continue to find ways to improve scores. One of the things that I really liked, we sit down kid by kid, skill by skill. One of that's, I think, one of the strengths of our standards-based report card is we sit down, we look at every single kid, how they're doing in every standard. If they're not making growth, we set a plan for them. They have to come in and get interventions. And they continue to get improved and extra attention until they're showing proficiency. So it's a system that's set up so that we will continually drill every single thing out and to get there to achieve to the highest levels they possibly can. We'll continue to work with staff to evaluate what we're doing and do that analysis and continue to try and prove differentiation so that we can offer intervention to kids to get them to succeed as much as we can. And then this is test participation rates and we had ninety-nine percent of our students test. I think we had three kids that maybe opted out. I had a student that had significant health issue and couldn't test that year and then two that the parents opted out. They said, we're not going to, I don't want my son or daughter to do it, which they have that option to do. But you know, there were some schools that obviously tested much lower than that. And I think, Sean, the next one is, yeah, it shows the number of kids that opted out. So that's the middle school. Are there any questions?
I have a comment. I remember sitting here a few years ago and we were talking about a pretty controversial topic of standards-based grading that the middle school was moving to and probably even controversial for myself included. And I remember you talking about your plan. And there was even some controversy amongst your staff. These test scores have now, I mean, looking at what this shows and looking at, thinking about your plan and those words, your exact words, we're drilling down into every student and what the skills that they lack and the skills that they need to have and really picking apart those state standards and making that happen and having those teachers re-drill those kids. I think the data, looking at this, supports what your vision was. And I just got to say that even if the teachers didn't like it at the time, clearly, everyone has bought in to what's happening there and it's been obviously really good for kids. So when you say commend the staff there, and I don't mean to take anything away from any staff in any other building anywhere else, but for everybody to buy in, to see the growth in kids like this is truly amazing. The middle school is, middle school staff really had something special there.
Thank you.
About an hour before, I got my phone call from the DPI in regards to exemplary performance at the high school for CTE. I got another phone call from the Department of Public Instruction. They wanted to talk to me about the performance in the middle school. And I can't say anymore, I'm sworn to secrecy, but next month, I'm going to tell you why they called. They told me I can't tell everyone, but I told Tom. But there is going to be an update coming next month, which is something that's never happened in the school district of Amory. And I'll leave it at that. The anticipation, I know, is killing you. But in January, you'll know. Jessica, you're up.
I don't like surprises. I think we need to know.
It's a good surprise.
Drift his arm.
It's hard to follow that up.
All right, so Amory Intermediate School, we had an overall score of seventy-five-point-one, which exceeds expectations. On the next slide, you will see that we exceed the state by over nine points in both ELA and in math. One thing I do want to highlight as we focus on our ELA scores is that generally, research shows that with an implementation of a new ELA curriculum, you should anticipate your scores dipping over a three-year average. Last year, they did not dip. This year, they have not dipped. So we are in year two of full implementation. So we really have a firm understanding of the program that we're using. We've gone above and beyond listening to our teachers when they say that they want professional development in ELA for our K-five teachers. So that's really been a primary focus for us. Next slide. Our science and social studies scores also exceed the state scores. What I would like to also share is that the intermediate school really hangs their hat on science and social studies. Reluctant readers who don't want to necessarily read what's being assigned in their curriculum really thrive when they're learning about nonfiction. So when you are reading about history or about science, it really is a hook. Our teachers here go above and beyond to really hook student interests. Annie Brayton here has a fantastic library full of different nonfiction topics that really hook our readers. So it really takes a whole approach, but we really make science and social studies engaging. So when we talk about that project-based learning, it's happening within classrooms. This Thursday, we have a STEM challenge where our grade levels are mixing kids and they're going to be doing different challenges that focus on different science topics and themes. The next slide is our achievement. As you can see, we are the blue on the bottom. We exceed the state in ELA and also in math, averaging nice, nice, solid scores there as well. In achievement. Priority area of this one is growth. An area of focus for us will be English Language Arts. How we are addressing that growth score, wanting to really have that be our primary focus is this is the first year we are implementing WIN Groups or RTI. So we assess students with FastBridge. We then sort them out skill by skill and we develop groups. And so thirty minutes a day, they are assigned to a different teacher based on skill. So we're really mixing the classrooms together, but really focusing on that targeted skill. We reevaluate those skills every eight weeks to see where the growth is and then we reshuffle our groups again. So kind of like the middle school is doing, is really just constantly looking at that data and really reevaluating what are the skill gaps that we're seeing with our kids. Our math growth scores look very solid as well. Our on-track to graduation, I wanted to highlight our attendance. It exceeds the state. We work really hard. Each building within the district has attendance procedures and policies. And so as we talk about that chronic absenteeism, which is the next bar graph over, I wanted to just share that we really focus a lot on working with families at these levels. It's generally not a bearer that the student doesn't want to come to school. It's generally a bearer of parents getting their child here. So really working with them, school counselors are a part of that. Really trying to, you know, focus on what is preventing that child from getting to school consistently or getting them late. Really trying to individualize and work with the needs to get that child here at school. The next is our priority area, target group outcomes. On the bottom, it's not on the bottom for some reason, but it's attendance, chronic absenteeism, growth and achievement. And so the third one is the one that I really wanted to highlight was our growth scores. Something we really wanted to focus on last year, which was one of our priority highlight areas, was to continue to really focus on the growth of students. So meeting those individual needs. We hadn't started our WIN Groups, but we started our conversation of those WIN Groups last year based on data. So we are in full implementation of that. This bar graph highlights our below basic, basic, proficient and advanced students. It actually reads opposite of what I generally think it should. So at the bottom is your below basic. So we're always looking at trying to increase those top three different colors to make our students grow in those needs in those areas. So that's some good progress over time for ELA. And then the next is math. And we are growing and just continuing to really make sure that we're challenging our high-level learners as well. A few things we do in math is we do math contests and math competition. Those are in fourth and fifth grade. And so we take our top math students and really individualize some instruction that they're getting over a certain period of time as well. This is something that I'm very proud of is the test participation. Here at the Intermediate School, we tested one-hundred percent of our kids. As Mr. Duffler shared, we find it very important that we're testing all of our kids. This data drives a lot of what we do. We've met as a data committee here at the IS, really talked about the different strands. So when you go into the forward, we can break it off by strands. One of our focus areas for math, for example, is geometry. Geometry is actually taught at the end of third, fourth and fifth grade. We generally don't teach it until April and May. However, we take the forward a lot earlier than that. So we just met a couple of weeks ago to make sure that teachers are embedding that Unit Eight and doing skinny mini-units that are happening in January, February and March and trying to sprinkle those in because our students, if we followed our scope and sequence of our curriculum, we wouldn't even get to geometry until the very end of the year. So we work really hard at looking at our data as well. And then the next slide, it just highlights that we tested every single one of our students compared to a lot of our neighbors. So we're very proud of what we've done here at the Intermediate School as well. We have a pretty robust action plan, but first, I'll talk about the highlights. So just, you know, we exceed expectations. Our achievement score exceeds the state in ELA and in math. Our growth score is something we wanted to work on last year. So I'm proud to say that we've made some nice gains in that. And then our on-track to graduation. So we positively exceed chronic absenteeism, which again, really working with families on what are the barrier to getting their child here at school. This actually isn't part of the action plan. I see the top is not labeled right. This is highlighted as well. Tom showed you a different graph just a couple of minutes ago where the projected growth of a student would be three-point-oh. And so I wanted to just highlight that we exceed that three-point-oh projected growth that we exceed. that we exceed in several different areas, that being in students that were not proficient last year, and then students that did not exceed in math, and students that are economically disadvantaged have greater growth scores than what was projected for them. Our action plan, really focusing on the big three here at the intermediate school, so really focusing on our professional learning communities. Our educators meet every week. During those meetings, we go through data, usually FastBridge or progress monitoring data, and we really talk about individual students. What are the skills that they are missing, lacking? How can we build those up? Action plan in ELA is just continue year two of our curriculum. We are focusing on the alignment of our essential standards, focusing on improving the growth score in ELA, which is our target group here, utilizing goal setting on the forward exam. We did that last year for the first time, so we will continue to do that. Students sit down with their classroom teacher, they reflect on what their scores were, and then they make their own individualized goal of how, how well they think they can do, or what would be an appropriate rate of improvement for them. Just getting them to buy into that and have some conversation around the forward helps set the tone for it. And then finally, the implementation of RTI groups, which is what we are successfully doing at the start of this year. In math, there are new Wisconsin math standards that have begun this year. Those will be on this upcoming forward exam. So, we've done a lot of phase, phase one, two, and three rollout over the last couple years, working with math reps across all grade levels. So, we will see those on the forward. Mathematical practices is something that is on the new math standards. They've been implemented, they've changed a little bit, but really working with elementary and intermediate teachers to know what those math practices are. As, if they're, if they're done it correctly at the interme, or at the elementary, then they transition to here to us, and we just build upon them. And then again, collaboration and focus on math strands. Again, that was that geometry unit that I talked about, making sure that we're hitting geometry earlier in the year. So, really breaking down those strands and finding out what are the weakest themes or topics that we struggle with here. And then continuing to focus on PBIS, so implementation of our tiered systems of supports. We utilize small groups. If we are seeing behaviors in cer, certain kids, we'll bring a small group of students together and be able to directly instruct them on how we share or get along, or how we resolve conflicts. We use second-step curriculum to provide universal instruction at a tier-one level that's taught by our school counselors, as well as classroom teachers. And then our school counselors also, this year, implementing an anti-bullying curriculum in grade three to help with developing friendships for all students at the intermediate school. I think I have one more. TSS. So, just continuing to train our staff on trauma-informed practices through professional development, and then utilizing the second-step curriculum to foster an environment in which all students feel safe, valued, and confident. Do you guys have any questions for me?
What is tier-one and two social academic instruction?
So, tier-one would be something that all students are getting. So, for example, if we're noticing that we're having some playground problems at recess, teachers would talk with students about how do we resolve conflicts? So, we would talk about taking turns, maybe finding a new activity, finding a new group of friends. So, that's happening at a whole classroom level. If we notice that maybe Jess is still struggling with that, then I would be a part of a smaller group in which we're directly maybe modeling what it would look like to resolve a playground conflict if we're not taking turns on the slides. So, just a little more intense, small group, working with kids.
I have a question for all of you. We're looking at this, and we're talking about growth at all buildings, and growth seems to be where we put our focus as it should, so taking our kids from where they were to hopefully where they can go. And we talked a lot in the last couple of years about COVID learning loss, and so, I would, I would hope that now with things kind of returning, turning back to normal and having more normal schedules, more normal curriculum, that we would see a greater rate of growth in this last year. Also, this, the federal government, state government, the school district has put funds and, and added additional help to make up for that, that learning loss that we had for COVID. And so, I'm just wondering, from each perspective, I think that we put a lot of focus on some of our younger learners and spent a lot, a lot more money there than maybe at some of our, maybe sixth through twelfth grade. And I'm just wondering what your perspective is. Has that seemed to help the interventions that we've done and the money that we've spent in putting those, those pieces into place? Has that helped in your experience with fostering this growth from the COVID learning loss? And do you guys think that there's more that the district could do, or that the board could do, and, and help foster the growth that you guys are looking for? Tom, you shouldn't have anything to say about this. Just be quiet. But is there something that we're missing with the COVID learning loss that we could help with, or, or has the things that we've done, has that been helpful, or somewhere else that we need to go with that?
I, I think the one thing that I would just mention is, is the range, the gap between our, our top and bottom has, has grown, and trying to shrink that range is, and, you know, at the high school, that's why we've been putting such an emphasis on trying to help the bottom students, but we also wanna keep the challenging classes and stuff that we're famous for at the high school. So, for us, it's trying to just shrink that range that has definitely grew over time.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing he just said. We, you know, when we hit, we went really more digital, really the direct instruction was digitally, and the, our, our upper achieving kids did really, you know, did fine with that. It was the kids that maybe weren't always on or, or struggled to learn that way that, that had learning loss. But at my level, it was mostly math. Math had learning loss, because it was tied more to direct instruction than ELA. Where, where at the lower levels across the state, it was, it was reading that had the biggest learning loss. And that's pretty much true across the board.
And it makes sense if you think about how kids learn. So, did you, did you see that we talk about that gap between the highest achievers and our lowest, lowest achievers, that we saw that grow? Is that something new that you saw grow more because of COVID, or no? Or that's just the sign of the times with or without COVID?
Why, I don't, I mean, I don't know if it, if it's a direct result of COVID, but it's happened after COVID. I mean, the gap is.
That, I guess that was my question, yes.
Right. And so, yeah. And, you know, I don't know if it's a little bit of a different composition of the community of Amory as well with that number and the, the economic level, poverty level, if that number increasing has impacted us as well. I don't know.
Did you, do you think that you've seen, when we talked about like absenteeism, do you think that you've seen our absenteeism, specifically in the high school, go up after we had that break from school, that we weren't here? Do you think that that's fostered over at all, the kids of like, they got out of habit, they got out of routine, they got out of, and then it's hard to get back into that? Or no?
For a small handful, but the vast majority are, they don't even remember COVID. For good reason.
So, things, things are back to basically what?
I think so.
Okay.
Sean, was, is there funding associated with this?
As the scorecard, no. I think you're making reference to Esser dollars from years gone by, but there's no funding connected to your performance.
No. No, I, yes, I was absolutely talking about Esser dollars that we added teachers to.
They haven't even talked about that type of thing. What they have talked about is adding the arts and CTE on here, but that's been talked about for three, four years, and it's never happened. If they wanna add CTE, I bet that would be awesome, because that's an area where we have shined.
Yeah. I would say the financial investment that the district has put into staffing and resources has made a huge impact at the primary level. You know, our greatest gaps, as Tom said, really was in, in ELA. So, we're still doing some of that backfilling from, from COVID. Learning to read is, is hard. It's, it's really hard for kids. Some, it comes easy, some, you know, they need some direct instruction. So, really, we have fantastic Title One teachers that are constantly assessing where kids are. We've been able to invest in some really, really great research-based programs. We've got, again, amazing Title One teachers that are going back, so as students are going along with their peers in fourth-grade curriculum, during that RTI group, they're actually going back to some of those foundational skills that they, that they missed. So, it's a fine balance of, of making sure that they have what they need, but also filling in those back skills so they, they can be successful. So, it's been a great investment in our kids, and it, it really is paying off.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one more comment, I think, that should be said as well, is that you don't see these kind of growth scores in schools unless they're using really positive inclusive practices. That is, keeping students, regardless of their barriers that they have, they're bringing in through the school door, keeping them into the flow of instruction, making sure there's high expectations, that, that does sometimes cause some staffing issues, because it's staffing-intensive. So, we've got some of those kids that are classes that are being co-taught in math, that are supportive teaching, where we have two adults in that classroom, really breaking instruction up into small groups, differentiating. But that is, that is not something that you're gonna be able to do without, you know, that commitment to staffing. But it's a commitment that drives results, and we're seeing it in some of these numbers. So, I think it's, thank you for everyone, keeping kids in the flow of instruction and being committed to those inclusive practices.
So, one thing I, I'm curious if, if you see all that growth in the low end, which leaves very little room for growth on the high end, in the upper grades, and that reflects falsely, poorly, on your staff and what's being done. So, you guys, you did well, but the report card doesn't show that. So, my question is, are you aware of, or Sean, are you aware of any groups, the teachers' associations, or groups of superintendents that are trying to do something with the state to try to change?
If you want an uprising in the superintendent's group, just mention this report card. There has been nine years of the district, of districts receiving a report card. Seven of the nine years has been a different computation to get to the N-number. That seems a little strange to me that you would change it that often. It is, has great inequities, and sometimes the inequities have fallen on deaf ears, and then things have changed, and they've changed again to benefit certain spots. Tom, go ahead.
We, I meant that, I, I represent our district at the DAC meetings, which is the assessment coordinators that covers heavily in this, and we advocate for changes all the time. And they have listened at times. I'll give you an example. Three or four years ago, they didn't use the target group, which means that your bottom twenty-five, how did your bottom twenty-five percent of your kids do on achievement and growth and attendance? And they, they just said, "How did your special ed kids perform versus your non-special ed?" But because, because of that, they didn't want to, they didn't want to target if schools didn't have a certain number of special ed kids. So, if they, because then you could drill down like, "Oh, I could, I know who that kid is." You know, they didn't, they wanted to avoid that, and rightfully so. So, then the report card came out, and if you had, you know, let's say more than fifteen special ed kids in a school, you would get a score for how they did. And obviously, that score would bring your score down overall, that achievement gap. But if you didn't have that many kids, that didn't count it at all.
Well, they actually counted it, you had a perfect score.
Perfect score, yeah, they gave you a hundred. And so.
And there was, there was only four numbers that were averaged, and one of them was automatically a hundred.
Hundred. So, it was.
That's not okay.
It was a completely inequitable system, and everyone was complaining about that to say, "Well, wait a second, you're setting up some districts that have a totally different expectation." Even if their special ed kids outperformed the other district, but the other districts didn't count. And so, we complained about that, and then they listened, and they said, "Okay, you know what we need to do is every, is, it doesn't matter whether or not a student has a disability or not, it's if they're not performing well." So, every single school has a bottom twenty-five percent, no matter how many kids you have. Who scored at the bottom twenty-five percent? And so, that's when the target group came in, which leveled the playing field for that area, but there's still room for, there's still issues. And so, we do bring it up quite a bit.
Well, my roots, obviously, in this district, there as high school principal, and I've spent thirteen years in the seat that Josh is in, and it's always, always was very difficult for me to process the fact that juniors, for the longest time, and still are assessed on a college entrance exam, an ACT. There are kids that are enraged by the time they get done filling in the bubbles for their name and their address before they even get to the test. That is not for everybody, and it's not a very good tool to use for assessing high school kids. I've always felt that.
So, is there anything, I mean, especially you say your group is doing something, is there anything that, as a school board, we, we can do to write letters to, you know, to keep hitting them with that point?
I think it's being addressed through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, the inequities here. But the unfortunate reality is that school report card is very much tied to state politics, and I, I feel unfairly so. In some cases, they're trying to document a failure of public schools. Well, if you wanna say that they have a high number of special ed kids and a high number of free and reduced kids, I bet they are gonna have struggles. So, I, I don't know that the school report card is really anything other than just a data point in time. I don't think we should make instructional decisions based on it, and we haven't been. What Tom's doing at the middle school isn't because of the report card. He's doing it because it's best practice. Same is true of the intermediate school, elementary school, and high school.
My, my problem with it is, like I already stated, is that it falsely reflects.
Does.
Poorly on the high school. And when you think about people moving to town or looking for a district to move to, and if they load up that report, and they don't have the context of what it truly means, it's a, it's a bad thing. And so, it has to be corrected, and I just want to throw out there that if there's anything that we could do for writing letters or getting in front of people, if we can get those contacts or make those connections, I'd be willing to put my name on something. Is, I guess that's all I'm trying to say.
I appreciate that. And, and if there is, I will certainly let you know. It's better than it's ever been, but it's still got a long ways to go. This used to be far worse.
It shouldn't be that hard. It's, this is, it's not rocket science to report how well you're doing.
Well, Tom and I have spent, Tom and I have spent a lot of time on the phone with the Department of Public Instruction, to the point where we figured out the numbers ourselves. And there are so many items within the calculations that are just frustrating.
Some, we've called the public construction, and they didn't even understand what we were talking about.
They didn't.
It's, and trying to get someone to, even to answer the phone is hard, but.
It's been frustrating.
Yeah.
So, the next steps in the process for us, elementary, good news. Paula can't talk, and she's got nothing to say, so this is good. The next steps in the process, by, by January thirty-first, we have to send notification to all families, which we're set to do after the first of the year. We're not gonna send things now, it'll just get lost in the shuffle of the holidays. And the other is to put a notice in the Amory Free Press, and they're here this evening. So, yes, we're aware of what we have to do, and we'll work with the Free Press to get the publication of the report cards in the paper. That's an obligation for everybody, so we'll do that. And we were looking at the second week of January. Again, we have until the end of January to do it.
Does that go out with context?
It goes out whatever context the Free Press will allow me to provide.
I told you to sit in the front row, Tom, so you can get it all.
Well, it's sad that you do all this work to gather all this data off the pit, and then there are so many inequities and inconsistencies within it that it really doesn't validate the scores. Sorry, Tom.
And, and like we said, yeah, we'll go, we'll go to the newspaper with information, but then we'll also, we, we're working with Tracy on a, on a flyer that's a four or five-page flyer that will go out to the parents.
Yeah. I have to say, I'm incredibly proud of the high school over the course of the last couple of years. It's a humbling experience to see that report card number, and you feel bad about it, but it's never been about excuses. It's always about, "Okay, we gotta get back to our action plan and figure this out, because we're sick and tired of it." And the high school has kept their head up, and they've moved forward in a strong, positive way, and that's a direct result of Josh's leadership. It, it's maddening, but at the same time, there are some things that we can glean from this to help ourselves be better, certainly self.
Yeah. Well, and I'll say this, the most frustrating thing is, the majority of our students worked their tails off last year, put in extra prep. Our tenth graders were the highest in the conference, and then when I show them the report card, they're like, "What? I don't get it." And I feel bad for them. You know, our, our lowest ranking in the conference at any grade level was fifth out of eight.
Politics, one-on-one.
Keep, keep working hard, kids.
It's life motto, right? And, I mean, and really, that, that is the jo, that is the job of the school, is to prepare kids for life, and you're gonna find out that sometimes that's just the way it goes.
Life ain't fair.
Life ain't fair. And with good leadership, and you don't keep telling them to work hard regardless of the outcome or what it is, that, that's on you. So, keep going.
This is just one aspect. Obviously, we need to continue to celebrate our successes.
There's a lot to be proud of.
My, my biggest thing is that we, you give them the information in such a way that somebody that looks at that has the ability to put some kind of context to it. So, if we, that's in that.
Well, it goes, should be right alongside the article of DPI coming out to the high school.
Yep, exactly. That's my point.
When they're coming out to see what you're doing there.
I'm on the edge. I might see with what the answer will be. I might, I think Josh and I might get ushered in a different direction. We'll try.
I think the school board needs to turn out for that as well.
Well, and really truly the, the change that they made on our scorecard, I think they did it because it benefits the vast majority of the schools, you know, by counting. That growth score more. And, you know, for me to tell my staff, I'm sorry, even though you do, did better on your achievement this year, it counted less. You know, that was a tough pill to swallow.
Thank you much. Now we'll go to our other information items. First is the referendum of building grounds.
Yes, we unfortunately, the last two months, we've had scheduling conflicts and sickness, which hasn't put the building grounds. Team on the ground, so to speak. I can give you a few highlights. As Josh mentioned earlier, we are on to phase three of. Moving six people or so to temporary locations and wrapping up what they got going on there. And what I mean by wrapping up, you're, you're talking the entire interior of the room being updated and then they move back in. Usually takes what? Six, eight weeks until they're back in. And then we move on to the next group. We've got six or seven rotations for the whole year. And that gets us up to date for everybody classroom wise, with the exception of math and science. Cause as you know, math and science is a rather large undertaking in the summer of twenty-four. The bathroom and the front entryway, I believe if not complete, it's awfully close to complete.
Yep, just waiting for some partitions in the restrooms, but it'll happen over Christmas break.
Okay, so we'll be fully ready to roll there. If you've driven past the elementary school, you'll see the very clear and apparent addition there. It's not just roughed in, but it is in and they're making great progress. We've been lucky on the weather. I mean, I guess I shouldn't say that, but we have been. That's helped us stay on schedule. Will be on the interior of the elementary when we get on into the, the spring, but right now we're still outside and the weather is beneficial for that. Anything that you wanted to share, George, that you have that's been percolating on your end?
Sounds good. We're about two weeks ahead of the high school.
Two weeks ahead of the high school, sounds good. Remember our finish line for the school year is May twenty-fourth and that was with design. We wanted to give extra time to Cross Anderson, so we gave them about ten extra days. Any days where there are no students and staff, they can get a lot more accomplished. They can be as loud and obtrusive as they need to be with kids there and staff there. You just can't do that. So that's a really sizable undertaking with math, science and the commons area. That will be a game changer and a facelift for the high school because unfortunately the truth is a lot of what they've done is up ahead of, up above the ceiling tiles and you'd never know. But you'll know after math, science and the commons is done. So Josh, anything to share?
I guess the only big thing that I would add is, is a little bit of the timeline has changed in that they're also going to start working on. The Fayad locker rooms right after, during spring break. They're going to do half of the locker rooms. They think they would have a struggle to get it done in the summer. So they're going to start what I refer to as the older section of the locker rooms. They're going to be doing that section starting after. Spring break or during spring break and our Fayad and athletics, people will have to combine into smaller locker rooms, but we'll make it work.
What are they doing down there? I, I, I feel bad that I don't remember this, but can you just tell me what, what's going to be done down there?
Yeah, so just on the interior like of the gym wall, there's a air handler unit. So in each corner of the gym, there's an air handler and then just into the storage room, there's a, a big air handler. It's a room about this big. And so that, those have to get accessed and they have to get it, they have to knock out a wall and, and move these big, well, smaller, but still big units in. And then they've got to go up into the ceilings and take out the old rusty water runs and, and replace all of, all of those.
So it's part of that HVAC system, but it's not like, we're not remodeling the locker room themselves, other than what is necessary because of.
We're going to take out some of the, we have an excess of old Fayad locker banks in the middle there that we're going to get rid of. They just became garbage collectors basically and open it up and it'll actually help the remodel. Cause they'll be able to get their lifts in easier and not have to zigzag around everything.
Gotcha. Okay. That, that's kind of what I thought. I just was, yeah, somebody else had asked and I, I wanted to clarify that.
They're, they're going to grind the floors like they did in the hallways and put in new, new ceilings. So it'll, it'll feel, it'll feel renovated.
Okay, okay.
A little less red.
A little less red? It's very red.
Okay.
But remember it's a boys locker room. It will only be so freely once they are in there and the smell follows.
Radiates out of there. Over the sweat.
Well, it's good to be ahead of schedule and it's good to have very little surprises so far. We've done well that way. All right. Next up is school board election.
All right. The school board election is slated for April second, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a position at large Keith Anderson, position at large for Shaglenah. The office term runs from April twenty-second of twenty-four through April twenty-fifth of twenty-seven. Any candidate that is interested to run should file the necessary paperwork. It's a campaign registration statement and declaration of candidacy. Must be filed no later than five PM on Tuesday, January second, here in the district office located in the intermediate school at five forty-three Minneapolis Avenue. If a primary is necessary and you have to double the field in order for a primary to be necessary, meaning there has to be five or more candidates. Double the field would be four, so five or more. That date would be Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Noted. Now we'll move on to our action items. First up will be our athletic facilities upgrade. Okay?
I put together a very brief PowerPoint trying to encapsulate the timeline that is spanning approximately ten months now. Way back in the early part of the year, actually way back in January, we established an athletics advisory committee. There are thirty-three people on that committee. Two-thirds of them are school district employees. A third, their only connection to the district is that they're coaching in the district, but they're not school employees otherwise. That group first met on March eighth, twenty twenty-three and they articulated the needs that they saw in the area of athletics that they were most connected with. Every single sport was represented there. Not every single sport attended every single time, but they all had members on the committee. The athletic up, athletic upgrades were first presented to you, the board in April of twenty-three. And what you saw was here are the list of needs that were articulated. Finance options provided to you by Baird, by Lisa Voison in June of twenty-three. Revisions were made to the design again in June and July. Athletics advisory met and largely discussed what those changes were in July. And then a community engagement session was held on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Timeline continued revisions were again made to the design in September and October. Advisory committee met again in October. Revisions made again in November. Board voted to purchase Jorgensen Field on November twenty-third, or November of two thousand and twenty-three, sorry. Board voted to pass a resolution to borrow five million at that same meeting in November of twenty-three. And the board met with Cross Anderson to finalize design last week, Wednesday. That brings us to Jorgensen Field. And again, please stop me if I get rolling in here. You have a question, just shout it out, so to speak. The timeline on Jorgensen Field is out of our hands at this point in time. So the city voted to sell Jorgensen Field at the price tag of ninety-six thousand on October eighteenth. You voted on November twenty-first to purchase Jorgensen Field at that price. On December twenty-eighth, there is a planning commission meeting to hear the district's offer for Jorgensen Field. That takes place down at City Hall. On January third, there is a city council meeting where possible action may, may be made in regards to the city accepting that offer. I'm not sure what the response will be. That's again on January third. If there is an action that takes place on January third, there will probably be a resulting action on your end for January fifteenth meeting. For us to formalize that agreement with signatures, if you will. That's what I know of the Jorgensen Field timeline from Patty, from Patty Bjorkland, the city administrator. Perhaps I'll stop there. That might be a nice, a good place to stop for questions or comments if you have them.
Well, they talked about the lot lines and adjusting those. Is there any, do you have any other information to share on?
All I know is what we had discovered, we shared with them. And if you remember correctly, there was a little bit of a funny lot line. On the south end of the property by Unisource out towards Minneapolis. It was angled. And it actually had Unisource some of the property that we, we know as Jorgensen Field property and I, I don't think that Unisource even had any idea. And they didn't have a use. So to firm up that, to make that sort of a right angle, make it sort of into a rectangle. We asked about sort of an anomaly on the GIS map that ran down the service road coming off of Minneapolis, but we discovered that's just an anomaly on a map. We haven't engaged any conversation with SMC yet. I have not done that, waiting for the conclusion of this meeting to get directed from you as to what to do there. But that's what we know. But that is part of the conversation. That's been at least two, maybe even three emails about that. So they're well aware of it. They're looking at the same maps we're looking at. Any other comments or questions before I forge ahead? Okay. This map that you see here is the map that we left off with last time. It simply has the, the same labels as before. You'll notice that there is on the bottom of the screen, this was part of the two designs where you see the road curved. Remember the reason for that curve in the road was to make sure that you didn't clip the soccer field that exists. If you move that road to a straight off the intermediate school property, then you end up clipping that soccer practice field, which is a perfectly good playable field. We don't want to lose that. So that would then allow JV baseball, baseball, varsity baseball to fit in there. We're going to talk about phases in a second here. So that I'll hold up, hold my thoughts and move on from here. So financing, we have talked about this at a couple of different meetings, including our last meeting. There's no new tax impact to the community for this project. The money detail here is within the school budget or within the financing through the twenty twenty-two referendum. So I think there is some confusion that occurred from the eight million dollar price tag from the last meeting. But the, the price tag could be eight, could be nine, could be ten, could be fifteen, whatever you choose to do. Try and focus on what money we have available. What we know we have available is this. We did a five million dollar borrow back in November. So that's money we know for certainty is money that can be applied towards, towards this project. We have a pretty good estimation that a million dollars in addition from referendum contingency would be available. So then you can afford a six million dollar project. The board can stop right there and say, my appetite's six million. I have no appetite for anything in addition to that. That money and accrued interest that's there from the twenty twenty-two referendum, that can be used to defees debt if the board wants to do that. So it's a matter of which phase you want to do, phase one, phase two, phase three, or no phase, not do anything. But you can stop, tap out, opt out at any point in time, whatever your price tag comfort level is. The only thing you've obligated to do, to do based on signature on paper, so to speak, is the five million dollar resolution to borrow money. That you've done. So I'll turn it over to you guys if you have any questions on, on the financing slide.
I know when you went to phase two and three, you're approximately two million interest, but we also talked about the seven hundred thousand. One point nine recurring.
Yes.
So not to use that all, but that is a portion that can be funding.
And leaves about five hundred thousand for projects that need to be, that need to be addressing or not athletics.
Right, right. So we haven't.
You have not depleted that money to zero by, by any means, not even close. So when you look at the map that we have redone, the letters on the map, if you did phase one, if you do A. And I'll read it to you, not to belabor the point, but a new football soccer track complex, letter A, plus letter B. A varsity baseball field. If you do A and B, that's six million dollars. Stop. If you want to do A and B, that's a six million dollar price tag. You stop there. We have the ability to do that based on the five million dollar barrel. Based on the one million dollars that you would see from referendum contingency. If you want to go from there and do add-ons, is I think the technical word that they use in Cross Anderson world, you can add C, you can add D. C, you add a JV baseball field, that's a five hundred thousand dollar price tag approximately. If you want to do more at Jorgensen Field, there's a contingency built in with letter A and B for Jorgensen, but not a significant one. There's an endowment over there, so we're not exactly sure what money is going to be needed. You can add that or you cannot add that. If you look on the next slide, you can add any of these. You can add lights, you cannot add lights. You can add parking lots or not add parking lots. You can add a road, you cannot add a road. Obviously anything you add, you add money. Cause nothing is done here for free. So again, phase one is football, soccer, track, varsity baseball, six million, done. Anything you add, you know, the letters you see here adds dollars. So for ease of understanding, after that phase one, phase two, what would be a million dollars if you did? JV baseball and a road, that would be a million dollars. You did lights, that would be a million dollars. You do parking lots, that's five hundred thousand. Whatever you want to or don't want to do is your choice. You're phasing this in over two years and then the third phase. You then decide what you're going to do with the existing location where the football field is right now. The reason that's out in the future is you want to make sure you're firmly on your feet and moving forward with your new football complex before you do anything with the old football complex. Cause you might need it in September of twenty-four. We don't know. So that is completely up in the air. It could be soccer fields. It could be something entirely different. What I think we don't, what we don't want is to have a weed fest where it's just been abandoned. It looks abandoned. That I don't think we want to do that. But I, I know that you as a board would not ever choose that. We would make it look and, and make it be usable. So it could be over three years. It could be one year. It could be two years. It could be five million, six million, seven million, eight million. You can do whatever you want to do. The only thing that you're being asked to do tonight on behalf of the architect in essence is. Are the items you see on the screen are in the right spots. Cause in order to do an architectural design, Troy from LHB needs to know that they're in the right spots. But it doesn't obligate you to spend eight million dollars if you do everything that's on that screen. That's just design work. They bid. They do all of that. They bid it all out. Whatever you choose to do as a bid that becomes a contract. If you choose not to do it, it stops that bid. It doesn't happen. So that's up to you what's first, second, third and fourth. So the next steps, LHB architects finalize December and January. Cross Anderson does bid work in February, March. Phase one would be April, May, whenever we get out there of twenty-four. Phase one work hopefully in the fall of twenty-four. Phase two would be the summer of twenty-six. And if the truth be told, phase three could be the summer of twenty, uh, twenty-five, the summer of twenty-six could be phase three, if that's what you choose to do. So those are the next steps. I can't remember. Yep, there we go. You're going backwards. Okay, I think we got them all.
There is the possibility though, that if you decided that you wanted to do the whole eight million, that you could do phase one and phase two all this summer, correct?
Yes. Can it fit in the calendar? We would try, but you could financially do it all in the summer of twenty-four if you wanted to.
And was the new football field track complex? Is there a possibility that that could be used in the fall of twenty-four?
Yes.
For football games?
That is the hope, yes. And I think that is the plan.
It just seems a little aggressive in my mind, but.
Can be done. Cross Anderson's done it.
Okay.
Practically a bare field to start with. It don't get much better than that. Not, not really a whole lot of dirt.
Yes, they, they've been asked that question by a lot of people in this room and they are very confident. Our first ballgame for football, I believe is the third week of August. So that makes it a little harder, but they are confident it can get done. Baseball is less of a priority for the summer of twenty-four, obviously, because you're not playing in the summer of twenty-four. But you only have so many workdays on the spring because you got to deal with winter.
Well, and you got to get, anything you do with the JV varsity baseball field, you got to do it early so you can get a chance for that grass to start.
Correct.
So the, the further you kick that one down the road, it just is an exponential, you know, that one's out even further yet.
The way my mind has been operating is that phase one is that football, soccer, track, varsity, baseball for phase one. No, that can be done differently if that's what you want to do, but that's sort of the, what I've been operating under based on what I've heard you, Cross Anderson and LHB say.
And you said Steve grass on both fields.
Grass on just the varsity.
Or no, JV.
JV.
JV, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I meant JV, just the JV field is, is grass.
The varsity would be turf.
Yeah, and turf for the, yeah. But, but you got to give JV a chance to grow, right? Cause it sounds like it could be more than a year.
Yeah, I think that's their plan right now is to run JV at the varsity field, running back-to-back games. Didn't seem to want to do that, but might have to do that for a year.
Though I've seen, received some feedback, including from some board members, that they would be inclined to have the conversation about JV baseball versus road. In regards to which would be first and which would be second, or if you choose to do it simultaneously. But I, I get the road and it being meant a bit of a crowd pleaser for the community to have another way off of campus. I understand their frustrations. I drop off too. So that's a conversation we can have, but you don't need to decide that tonight by any means.
All right.
So while we're doing, deciding tonight is just to agree to move.
Is the stuff in the right spot?
Yep. Yep.
And we talked about basically the same thing last week.
It's identical.
And it would seem, yeah, it would seem like everything we talked about last week is captured here, so I would make a motion to accept the athletic facilities upgrade plan as presented and move forward with it.
Okay. And a second to Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Let's do a little more discussion. So just again, we're only, we like the plan.
And that's all we're looking to put on here.
Just the layout.
Yeah, I agree with the layout.
That's all the motions for is the layout.
Yeah, I agree with the layout, sir.
Okay, good. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? None? Here we go.
All right.
Josh. Early graduation.
Some people want to leave you early, Josh. I can't believe that.
Number is trending back in to a more normal number. I think last year I came to you with twelve or thirteen kids. We're at six kids this year, a variety of reasons, some moving to different states. Some have been accepted into college programs that are outside of our Amory realm and are starting in soon as January. Communicate with all their parents. I feel comfortable with these six individuals. I would say we grant their, they've met the requirements needed to.
Do they have opportunity, if they're gonna graduate early, can they still participate in graduation ceremony, right?
Yep, they can go through the graduation ceremony, but once they are officially early graduates, they can't do sports or activities or clubs or anything like that.
One thing that we've run into in my time and in Josh's time is military assignments and running into conflicts with the dates for graduation. I mean, I haven't, I'm not in the military. I've never been in the military, but I don't think we're gonna switch our dates for, for us so they can graduate. That's just the conflict.
And we don't have a conflict that way this year with these kids.
We're lucky, because that's happened in the past.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, that they could still participate in ceremony, that that answer, that question was answered.
Okay. Motion to request, grant the request for early graduation?
I'll make the motion. We grant the early graduation request.
And a second, Joe. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No? All right. Thank you, Josh.
Can we circle back around? I just have one more question on the...
Yes, sir.
Yep.
On the sports stuff. If we do those, if we do something different than eight million dollars and we split it out in phases, do you have a timeline of when those types of decisions have to be made?
Well, anything done for the spring needs to be part of the bids. But I think your timeline's pretty flexible, because what Cross Anderson's gonna do is they're gonna get bids for every bit of the work that you see on the map. And when you say yes to that, then they're gonna go ahead and get that bid locked in as a contract. So if you say, I, I think we ought to do a road here in the summer of twenty-four, as opposed to the summer of twenty-five, then we need to get the go-ahead to Cross Anderson to get that designed and get that bid and to get that contract in. And I imagine that's here in the very early spring. But I'll pin that down with Cross Anderson, but they're gonna need your directive in regards to what's for second, third.
Right, so my, the reason for that question is because we don't have a final on what's the full value of contingency and we don't have a final on the additional interest earned, right?
Right, we don't. Cross Anderson's waiting on L H B. They've officially surveyed all of the land. Now it's a matter of L H B finalizing the design, delivering that to us, you, and then delivering that to Cross Anderson. At that point, Cross Anderson gives you a final price tag. This will cost this. This will cost this, based on the bids they've received. So then you'll know for certain. You'll have every opportunity to weigh in before anything gets done.
I would assume maybe phase three would get pushed off, because I don't know that anybody's gonna bid for something to happen in twenty twenty-six, so...
Probably not.
And there, I don't know if there's a need to bid that at all, because that field and complex will just stay put for a couple of years, if not more.
Yeah, it might look like a standalone project in the future, but probably not be encompassed in this.
I agree.
It's a vision of the future, but not necessarily encompassed in this project.
And if it does become soccer, soccer can be pretty low maintenance or soccer could be big expense, depending on which kind of fields you want to put in. I mean, if you've driven past what Hudson has, the twenty-eight, five, thirty, hundred fields they got there, that probably was a pretty cost-intensive endeavor to line those and goals and all the fence lines. But that's not what we're looking at doing. There's three or four fields there at most. Or it could be something else. That's up to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
All right. Move on to donations. Again, amazing.
So donations to the district that you're being asked to receive. We have a five thousand dollar donation to the Angel Fund and a donation of hygiene products for our students from the Amory Women's Club. Deer Park Lions Club, four hundred and fifty dollar donation to the Angel Fund. Knights of Columbus Coats for Kids Drive, provided three hundred winter clothing items to children in our community. Also from the Knights of Columbus, I don't remember if I said that. Wisconsin Credit Union, a donation of coats, hats, and mittens from the Mittentree Project, as well as a three hundred and nineteen dollar donation to the Angel Fund. An anonymous donor, two thousand five hundred dollar donation to the C T E A Academy. Again, two thousand five hundred dollars. That's no small deal. The Elgo Memorial Golf Tournament, a donation of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars to the Amory F F A from the Fall fundraiser. And this would be the time for a round of applause, perhaps.
It's a testament of what we're doing here, really, and people support us like this. It really is. It's amazing. Thank you. And we need a motion to accept that.
With many, many, many thanks. This is a real, a real good boost that the community believes in what we're doing. They believe in the kids here. They know that there's needs and they just keep coming up big, time after time.
And a second.
Second.
Steve, all those in favor, please say aye. 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 And opposed? No? All right. Thank you again. Now we'll move, we have some personnel action items.
Yes. Little bit of movement. We have new employment contracts for the following individuals. Travis Bowermeister, he is moving out of a long-term sub situation, so you'll see his resignation in that other category a little bit. He's moving into a grade one teacher role. Sam Bosley is head track coach, coming full circle. He was coached many years ago. Samantha Bothman, regular education para. Matt Humple, varsity baseball coach. Rachel Kazmersky, director of clubhouse childcare. Jennifer Clemish and food service. Shannon Lisick, special ed para. Claire Johnson, special ed para. Bailey Peterson, seventh grade volleyball head coach. Scott Shogren, mechanic. Ashley Stensel, grade two teacher. Jaclyn Wiserman, a back-to-back long-term sub situation of twelve weeks for a grade one teacher and then twelve more weeks for a kindergarten teacher. Reassignments, Vicky Heiss moving from school nutrition to special ed para. Bridget Stoklum, special ed para to regular ed para. Lynette Wentz moving from grade two teacher to title one teacher. All three of those were voluntary moves, not forcible moves in any way. They all applied for jobs and moved. Resignation, again Travis Bowermeister, Gracie Cran in special ed as a para. Lawrence Doten for eighth grade boys' basketball. Jeremiah Fisk in varsity baseball. Crystal Nygon, seventh grade volleyball head coach. And Mark Volk as a JV volleyball coach are all personnel items that you would need to approve if you so see fit.
Motion approved, personnel items?
Make a motion. We approve the personnel changes.
Steve, and a second.
Second.
Aye. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No? There we go. Community comments. Check the clipboard. Nothing? So with that, we don't need a closed session, and so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. We are done. Thank you much, everyone.